Today, thirty-three AM on the first of November, Monday. Right, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan. And first item, actually, we're going to amend the agenda to add an item. We are going to add the approval of a recommendation from the Fire Commission to appoint Albert Bassett as interim Fire Chief. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll move it.
Second here.
Okay, all in favor? Do you want to get out of here early?
I think we all do.
Do you want to be at the end of the agenda or the beginning of the agenda? All right, first we'll do the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one for the regular meeting two weeks ago. Thereabouts and a special meeting we held on October twenty-second with the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes? So moved, Nick, move second?
Second.
All in favor? That's approved, public comments, this is a hybrid meeting? Anybody on? And anyone wishing to comment? I see no one from the public here, other than our pointy to the planning zoning commission. But any member of the public wishes to comment can do so either physically here or by email. And the email address for comments is B O S distribution at newcanac t dot gov. And we will read the comments before the end of the meeting. On agenda topics and then, so let's take up the appointment, I'm interim Fire Chief Jackman, Albie, why don't you come to the desk and Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, longtime Commissioner of our Fire Commission, Jack Horner.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As you all know, Chief Jack Hennessy retired officially as of this past midnight. And at a special meeting of the Fire Commission on Friday afternoon, the Commission unanimously appointed Albert Bassett as our interim Fire Chief. And we would like to ask your permission to approve that.
Okay. Questions for Jack or Albie?
Just grateful that you're willing to take that position, thank you.
Welcome aboard, Albie. It's the first time officially we've seen you and I think it's a terrific, terrific thing for our community. Have you step up and become our new Fire Chief? And kudos to Jack Hennessy, you know, Jack Hennessy and I, you would know. You know, we worked together in the E O C for years through storms and ice storms and blizzards and all sorts of hurricanes and such. And Jack was terrific, but I think you can fill his shoes admirably, so welcome aboard.
So technically, we're appointing Albie as the interim
Right.
Fire Chief. And that requires Board of Selectmen approval, so I move, have I already moved? I move with appoint Mr. Albert Bassett as our interim Fire Chief. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I'm gonna welcome Albie myself. He's very, very, Albie's almost a New Canaan resident, he lives in Silver Mine, just over the Norwalk line, so it's
Bring you a little closer.
And, you know, so everybody's very, very pleased to have Albie join us and we look forward to having you as our interim and perhaps soon our chief. With that, I take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now you may leave, Jack.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
That brings us back to our Board of Education appointment. So we had a special meeting on October twenty-second with the Board of Education. And we contractually agreed to make an appointment today, which under the Connecticut statutes can be done by the First Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen. But since we had authorized the First Selectmen to do it today, I just want to reflect for the minutes that I'm making that appointment officially today. Katrina Parkill did a fabulous job as Chairman of the Board of Education. She's going to continue on effective November sixteenth to fill out the balance of the term of Carl Gardner, who took a job in another state. And so I'm very pleased to be able to make this appointment. Anyone wish to make any comments?
I echo.
Just that you're making the appointment, but we, Kathleen and I have signed off on that appointment and
Normally, under our charter,
Yeah, it's a little complicated.
All appointments are made by the Board of Selectmen, but since this was agreed that we would do it effective today and had we not had a meeting, I would do it anyway. So.
And we've signed the document.
Correct, so we will reflect for the minutes that I am making the appointment today of Katrina Parkill to fill the vacancy of Carl Gardner and effective November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We actually have a hiatus for two weeks, so we cannot make any appointments after today, so.
That's good.
By charter, so. Okay, that being the case, we'll move on to our table. Actually, we're not going to discuss ARPA today unless you want to. We still are trying to formulate a plan with the guidance of the Board of Finance and the Town Council. But do you want to talk about our
If you could provide an update, that'd be helpful.
Well, since the Joint Committee of the Board of Finance and the Town Council met, I think in a meeting that wasn't either recorded or had anyone present, they've given some written suggestions, I'll call them. And I think we have to come up with a plan that we can then present as the beginning of special appropriations rather than a complete plan. We have three years to spend the money and some of these things are sort of in evolution. So I would plan to bring in two weeks the beginnings of actually an overall plan.
Okay.
And then be in and a couple of special appropriation requests.
And so that overall plan comes from
Well, I think we ought to, we will get together a draft to approve in two weeks.
You being the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we approve it.
Right.
Okay.
And it may be rejected by the other bodies, but at least
So yeah.
I just understand the process, so
Yeah.
They're going to give us their own recommendations, we'll review it as a plan, approve it, it then goes through the course of the other bodies.
Right.
Comes back to us for special appropriations.
Yeah, and I don't envision necessarily that it's a total plan that everything is going to be approved upfront, but we know we have six million dollars to spend over three years and we need to start somewhere, so. But I think, you know, we saw the Norwalk Plan, which I thought was a very good job where they they took input from the community. There's going to be a meeting with the Community Foundation and the Town Council members just to committee to understand what the Community Foundation may do with respect to the nonprofits and, but it's coming together.
Could you share that?
It's a process.
The Norwalk Plan?
What, I thought I did already?
I did.
Okay.
I haven't seen it either, and I do think it's important that we look at what other towns are doing. Linda, you and I have had discussions about applying some of the money to lost revenue. I seem to be a, you know, a voice in the wilderness on this, but it is not inappropriate in my mind to account for lost revenue due directly to COVID now. You know, to some extent, it goes in one pocket and comes out another, but I just think for the taxpayer, I'm just speaking for the taxpayers and I think it's
The advantage of
Linda's coming up, so.
The advantage of claiming some of the
Yeah.
The advantage of claiming some of the funds as lost revenue takes the upper restrictions off the use of the funds and we may want to
Exactly.
Do some of that, so.
Exactly.
Linda, do you want to say anything?
No, just to clarify on your point, because we had this discussion with our auditors and Kevin. And one of the things that they said was replacing lost revenues does not necessarily mean that those funds necessarily go into the general fund. You could allocate those to replacement of revenues. They could still stay within the grant funds where we have them now, but it just removes the restrictions on what you can do with those.
Exactly.
Example, if four million dollars is identified as revenue replacement, then you've already met the requirement for that four million and then you could spend it as the boards wish to.
However you want to spend it, that's exactly right.
So that's the advantage.
Right, right.
Just a question, Linda. While we did, I absolutely recognize that we lost revenues based on COVID. Overall, I believe that we ended the year with a budget surplus, is that correct?
Overall, yes, our budgeted, our actual revenues have exceeded budgeted revenues in previous years.
Right.
Sorry, go ahead.
Part of that is a function of our collection rate, because we budget ninety-eight and a half and
It's really that cushion is really meant to
There's always going to be that cushion.
Right.
But it's lost revenues on a gross, it's not net, right? It's actual loss, we know, for example, we lost revenues in parking.
So there are line items where we've actually lost revenue. The way that the G F O A, not the G F A, but the way that the Act has us calculate is you calculate lost revenue on everything.
Yes.
And they give a generous four point one increment on total revenues. And therefore, by basing on that formula, even though we've over, it's very, it's very, it's a very generous formula. I think there's only one community, perhaps I believe in Connecticut, that can say they lost overall, and I forget the name of the community, but they had an Amazon, I think it was an Amazon facility that came to town and then their commercial base just ballooned. But the formula is very generous in terms of applying lost revenue.
Would you say in addition to the cushion that we have in terms of collecting revenues, our conveyance fees actually also went up because as a result of COVID, we had obviously an influx of people moving into New Canaan and therefore actually we saw a positive increase in our revenues as a result of COVID, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's a fair statement. So if you took out property taxes and you just did analysis of all the other revenues, less taxes because of that collection rate, you're about break even.
Right.
Because the conveyance fees did make up for the other.
There is pluses and minuses, if you will, so, thank you.
And I made the point to the Board of Finance that this should be a decision primarily by the elected bodies and not by the appointed Board of Finance. Because the Board of Finance really is there to
I agree.
To judge what our needs are. And every year when the department managers present their needs, rarely do we add too much, which are like nice to haves. And this, these funds are really in the category of things that we, we should do extraordinary things to improve the town. And so the decision as to what kind of nice to haves we should do is something, including the nonprofits. You know, some of the nonprofits were banged around and we got a, the Community Foundation knows the needs of the nonprofits and
But we shouldn't simply delegate
No, but
You know, a million dollars, two million dollars, the community fund, I love the community foundation.
But actually, we're
But I think as a Board of Selectmen, we should be overlooking this and making sure that
So on that point, we're thinking about having the Community Foundation act more as a consultant and an advisor to solicit their nonprofit, the nonprofits, because they cover all the nonprofits in town virtually. And have them identify any COVID impacts and then come back with recommendations. But the decision will be made by this board recommending them to the other boards.
That sounds good. So you wouldn't perceive
We're not going to just give them the money and say you decide how
Okay, that's a new
I think that was initially, we, but again, they're going to have to have the nonprofits justify COVID impacts. And then see how many really have negative impacts, this should be helped.
And just with your point on the Board of Finance, I mean, obviously we respect their opinion too, so
Yeah.
Beyond just the elected members, I hope that their pointed views would also be considered.
Well, they're going to have to make a recommendation to the Town Council.
Yeah.
Okay, that being said, let's move on to Tree Warden, Tiger's on by Zoom, thank you, Linda.
All right, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about being remote. So the Tree Warden went out for his latest bid on October twenty-first. We received three bids for the fifteen separate locations. Mill River was the low bid, thirty-one thousand, three oh one. Bids range from thirty-one thousand to forty-seven thousand. In keeping with our notes from before, about three quarters of these trees are ash trees as we in the past, we continue to have this problem for a number of years, unfortunately. And we'd like to go forward with the award to Mill River Tree for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars.
Questions?
I just had one question for you, Tiger, and maybe you can just remind us. As we take down trees and those are all part of the budget, do we also have a separate line item? And maybe I'm remembering this, where we consider replacing those trees that are dead or dying? Is there something that we have as a separate line item, just sort of a carbon replacement, if you will?
We don't have a separate line item for tree replacement itself.
Tiger, you're fading.
Sorry, doing my best, can you hear me?
Yes.
We don't have a, we don't have a line item per se. We have a tree maintenance line that we can then utilize to plant trees, but we also work and rely heavily on the beautification lead, the conservancy, the garden club and others whereby they buy the tree and our forces plant them. So we've done a number of trees throughout town in that garden. Grant through sustainable C T to plant fifteen trees in Waveney approximately a week and a half ago. Well, we don't have a line item per se, we do partner with other people and then provide all the labor to take care of that, the installations.
Well, perhaps for further consideration as we approach the budget, so.
Well, actually, that's one of the items for the ARPA funds we talked about.
Yeah.
Providing a hundred thousand dollars for trees, because we haven't had a tree replacement program.
Right.
I also thought perhaps we ought to have a program where residents, you know, we often take down trees in the right of way, which are important to the landscape of the, but perhaps we ought to have residents be able to donate a tree that we would plant if they are willing to donate the tree.
Great ideas.
So. Trees, trees, trees. I move approve the request from the Tree Warden to enter into a contract with Mill River Tree Service for thirty-one thousand, three oh one for removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in the town. Second?
Second?
Discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next two items relate to the two twenty Elm Street purchase, which we announced. Because we have two investors alongside the town, we are going to hire a separate law firm from our town attorney to to prepare the condominium documents, we're going to condominiumize the building. The town will essentially have half of the building for the Board of Education. And so it's important that we have so Mike Sweeney at Carmody, Torrance Sandak and Hennessy in Stanford, well known to us, head of the real estate practice there. He's a member of the Housing Authority Board. We've asked him to do this so that he can sort of represent all three parties. And the town attorney will oversee our review of the document from the town's point of view. That needs to get done in the next two or three weeks, so we can bring this transaction to closing. So any questions about hiring Mike Sweeney and Carmody Torrance?
I'm just wondering, is the cost of this agreement, is that shared by all of the new owners?
Well, actually, the way it's worked out, the town is sort of leading this because we're effectively selling the units to the private investors, which helps in terms of giving us independence as far as the price that we're achieving. So because we own the land and we're ending the ground lease, the transaction as a whole is something the independent investors have had to make their own decision as to purchasers, but we are effectively turning around buying the building from the bank and immediately reselling it, the pieces of it to the other two investors.
So that's how the transaction will actually show up on the records?
Yeah, exactly.
I've been known to speak my mind on things. You'd be surprised, Harry Truman is one of my favorite presidents. We disagreed on occasion on a few things, including police department at Saks, but this is a great deal that you've constructed, and I really mean that. We are providing our Board of Education, whom we all love, with Class A office space. I think it's suffice to say Brian Superintendent Lutz is over the moon in terms of this space. It's just fantastic, it meets all of the needs of the B O E, including a launch program. And we're doing this for less than two million dollars and getting fifty-four percent of the building, which is an incredible building. And that's because of, you know, you value the three million dollar, ninety-nine year lease that we're contributing essentially, right? This is a great deal and kudos to the man to my left. I think, I think it's, it's, it's kind of been lost in the kerfuffle of politics, but it's a great deal. And kudos to Kevin for making it happen.
Thank you. It has to be approved by the Board of Education. So in mid-November, hopefully they'll have a meeting and approve this move and then we can get on with closing the transaction. Bank would like to close by the end of November. We probably won't be able to make that schedule because of the need to have both the Board of Finance and the Town Council approve the bonding of it. But I think we, we have a chance of closing by the end of November.
Yeah, and I can say the Board of Education is definitely in favor of this based upon my conversations with them, at least this Board of Education.
Okay. So I move that we approve this request to authorize me to engage Carmody, Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy to represent the town in connection with this acquisition of two twenty Elm Street, which primarily drafting condominium documents.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then related to that is we have to inspect the building and we have Savin Engineering who's done inspections for us before. We actually, in order to do the inspection of the building itself, we know the building very well, the building department has worked with it for years and it's probably the nicest building in town, it's a modern building, oh, Bill Osmond's going to come up here and present this to us. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning.
There, I was like, okay.
Well, everything Kevin says is true, the building's in good shape, but once the final sale goes through and we are owners of the building, we'd like to have Savin come in and then do a full scale of going through the whole building, all the equipment. We've done Savin reports on all our buildings in the past, I know you may have recalled that. And they'll give us a capital forecast on budgeting for any major expenses that we can foresee in the future. And then once they submit that data, then I'll put all the data into the facility, do a capital forecasting program so we can then track it and know where we're going and it'd be kind of nice to know what's forecast is right over the next twenty years.
Any reason why we couldn't do it before closing?
We can.
Well, again, the need for the inspection is we have to be able to sign a purchase and sale agreement, which actually I'm not sure, perhaps should go to this body in two weeks or not, but the, we have to have the inspection done in order to proceed with the purchase and sale agreement. The inspection, the inspection
Right.
The inspection of the, that you do for negotiating the purchase
Yep.
is much more limited, that's under five thousand dollars.
Right.
The long-term analysis of what we want to plan on doing is something we would do with a new building or any building anyway. And I'm not quite sure why facilities dude is not doing this as opposed, but
It's just, it's an engineering
Right.
Study.
For example, the roof is probably, has ten more years and we're probably going to want to have a capital reserve fund with the other investors to have that money for the whereas normally we would simply put it in our budget ten years from now rather than
Prior to the final approval, there is a building inspection going to happen. This is more, this is, yeah, this is deeper dive into actual make models of all the equipment, that type of stuff.
Right.
Thank you.
They have two brand new boilers and we're, ever source is going to bring gas there early next spring, so we'll have that building converted to gas. We also have to bring the town owned fiber over to that building.
We do.
And since we are tearing up our parking lot to bring in the gas line to Town Hall in a few weeks. And also they're tearing up Elm Street, it's a good time to tear it up for the fiber as well. So anyway, but so we are, did I already approve the initial?
You approved the initial one, it was for three thousand dollars.
I think that's on your tablets that I approved the initials inspection, but this is the overall inspection to be able to proceed, I suppose, once we know we have a signed purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah, whenever
Yeah, they're going to come in and do the inspection and they're going to write the report, but we won't have the full report until three weeks or so.
Right.
But I don't anticipate we're going to find anything on the inspection that's going to say we want to renegotiate the price because
This is more for a deep dive and getting our capitals laid out, so we know we're up against, that's more what this is about.
And Kevin mentioned that you know the building well, is that, why?
The building department, right, right.
The building department, sorry.
They've seen a number of renovations over the years from the
I see, okay.
Original construction.
Just permit, right, got it, so, thank you.
I would also address the point that, you know, someone thinks we could put the Board of Ed elsewhere, like in Waveney House. And they're really at those possibilities, I mean, Irwin House could not be converted to a Board of Educational offices nor could Waveney House. So this is a unique opportunity when something like two twenty comes along to be able to accommodate the Board of Education.
It's going to pay for itself in five years, five years. And then it's all gravy, I mean You know, I was chairman of the Board of Ed, I remember having lunch with Jeb Walker, you know, ten years ago and pleading with him, you know, hey, can we get out of this lease? Because we're paying, at that time, it was, I think, a quarter of a million a year for the, for the space downtown and so this is a home run, it's a home run.
Home run. Okay, so, so I would move that we approve this request from, from me, I guess, or from Bill, to hire Savin Engineering for a total of fourteen thousand, nine sixty to document all systems and equipment for a capital facilities plan for the two twenty Elm Street building. Do I have a second?
Second?
I think seconds, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
We're doing the water service.
I'll do that one. That's me.
What is this?
You okay? No, let's, I'll do this one, the fire water service. Back early spring of last year, we had a water main break up at the transfer station. It's actually broken underneath the building of the old incinerator that's out of service and the highway department is actually tucked underneath it. We did some investigation up there, tried to figure out how we're going to fix this thing. At the end of the day, and after many of, some engineers looking at the thing, we don't think it's worth trying to open up Pandora's box here and cut through the floors of a building to try to get at this thing ten feet down below the building inside the earth. What we'd like to do is relocate that water main. Currently comes up from the highway department, so we're going to actually run it through the highway department and then have A J Penner, who does a lot of water main work, bring it up underground to reconnect to the service. And that fire service serves a fire hydrant and the sprinkler systems inside the tipping room of the transfer station. Currently, we have temporary water up there now in a ten thousand gallon holding tank that we've rented. We've gone through insurance company, insurance will be offsetting quite a bit of this, not all of it. We kind of worked through negotiations and we're in a pretty good place right now for this. There's a deductible of twenty-five thousand dollars and there were some other fees that are, when we negotiated that, were considered maintenance, but we kind of got through some of these things pretty good. So we're looking to collect over a hundred thousand from the insurance company put towards this, so until we're actually done, I get going, I'll know the total, it'll all up, because I still have monthly fees that that will be covering too, so.
So questions?
So this, this total bill of a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty-one thousand is, you anticipate will be offset through insurance to the tune of a hundred thousand?
Yeah, over a hundred thousand, yeah, I think it was like a hundred and fifteen thousand-ish, based on some projections and rentals of the water tank and what have you.
Is this, is this in the budget, whether it's the hundred and forty or the hundred and forty minus a hundred?
It was, nothing was budgeted for, this is an emergency thing that actually happened. We follow our typical course, you know, contact the insurance company, work through the adjuster. It's been a bit challenging of a year, as you can imagine, with materials, construction and
So when did this come, come to light?
Well, we found, we had to get engineers on board.
But when?
Oh, what happened, I think back in early spring, February, March, March, I think, that's when the water main broke, that's when we were trying to start doing our investigations, a little tricky doing the investigation, again, because it was underneath the building, we're trying to figure whereabouts under the building.
Right.
So it was a bit of a challenge and, you know, the building, that building's been out of service since nineteen ninety-ish, the old incinerator. So we really don't feel it's, it's worth trying to open all that whole can of worms up and, you know, eventually someday we'd like to get rid of that building, so we're trying to get everything out of that building, there doesn't need to be in there.
Is that the building where the dog rescue?
Well, it's one of the ones, but to the right, it went to the right of it also.
Right of it, okay.
Yeah, that whole, that whole, both those buildings are just very old and just standing there for no reason.
And so was the water then, the main capped so that it would stop?
I got it shut off, yeah, we haven't, yeah, we haven't shut off down the highway department, it was interesting how they brought it up, but we have, there's a valve down We have, there was a valve down there. We were able to shut it off.
Okay. And were these bids, did, did we bid this out or they were the only providers?
We did not. MAC Fire did a lot of work. They're, they're actually fire protection. They did sprinkler systems and they have their own engineers that you have to use to do sprinkler systems. So we asked them to get back on board to design it. They knew that, they know the building. They knew every, they know what's going on up there. So we asked them to do a design and now this is going to be the installation piece of their puzzle. AJ Penna, who does all, a lot of the work, if not all, for the water company, doing water mains. These guys know what they're doing. We want to say somebody knows that they're doing when it comes to fire service lines and water protection. And I had them out there and they're more than capable of handling this project.
And Kerma, Kerma is okay with this?
It's up to us.
Estimate?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's totally up to us. So what we did was because they, the insurance company actually owns where the location is now. And what we lose over there, put it back to new. We negotiate saying, well, they agree because they do sharp buildings that this would probably not make the most sense, but we can cover everything if you want to do it here. And if you wanted to go a different route, that's fine. Once we have a contract to that, then that's the money they'll give us. How we use the money is up to us. He said, that's your settlement. You want to put the water main over there? We're all for that. So they were pretty accommodating that way. And they were also pretty helpful. Cause they, I think would, in perfect world, if they had their choice, they'd run it out of the building, I believe.
I move approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with MAC Fire Protection and AJ Penna, as described by Bill for a total with a contingency of 15% of 140,950 for the water main, new water main at the highway department.
Second?
And to connect to the transfer station. Nick, second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Have a good day.
Next, we have Paul, do you want to come forward? So we have a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which since normally a lot of lawyers in town, because of conflicts, don't want to serve on planning and zoning. Paul, Paul is a private attorney who has been in Stanford for many years with Martha Kalina and prior predecessor, other law firms.
Where I was with Carmy's Lockwood.
Carmy's Lockwood.
That's my 51 years.
Right. And Paul's, Paul's at the age where he's stepping down, stepping down to a halftime role at his firm. So that he's, besides not having conflicts, is also an experienced attorney who would give us a new perspective. Dick Ward is the only other attorney. Dick was a corporate lawyer. And so I've known Paul for a dozen years and I, I, I welcome having another attorney on the Planning and Zoning Commission to follow our rules. Any, any questions for Paul?
Just, well, Paul, thank you for, I don't, I don't have the pleasure of knowing you. And so I'm going to just tell you, if, if we go forward with the vote this week, I'm going to have to abstain. And only because I usually, as we've discussed in the past, we want to make sure that we have a chance to get to know who we're approving. And so I'd like to have the opportunity to do so over the next two weeks. And otherwise I'm going to have to abstain from the vote because there's a fiduciary responsibility that we make sure that we know who we're appointing. That's all. But I appreciate that you have raised your hand and are willing to, to be considered.
Kathleen, have you not had the opportunity to?
You just got this. I got this on Friday, like Friday afternoon. So
I, I, maybe you could table this and, and push this back a couple of weeks and give Kathleen the opportunity.
Well, you know, our practice has been we take the DTC recommendations and we take the RTC recommendations. So, you know, I, we generally don't veto DTC recommendations. And so I, I, I thought we would take the vote this morning. Plus.
I'm not video, Vida of anything. I just think that we have a process.
Are, are there meetings coming up? That, the special meeting of the P and Z?
No.
Oh, okay. Misunderstood. No.
So what I'd like to see is, and, and again, with all due respect to you, Paul, this is not, this has nothing to do with you. This is really about a process, making sure that appointments, be it's Republican appointments, Democratic appointments. There's a, I just, again, as a separate thing, there's, there's some perhaps some information out there that is actually incorrect about appointments and elected positions and whether there are guarantees by any party. There's no guarantee that the Democrats have any seats or the Republicans have any seats. It's actually, well, it's called the minority representation. It's actually the only references to the maximum any majority, any party can have. So not, not one or the other.
Which effectively guarantees the minority party seats and
Certainly not.
The Republicans
Certainly not for this particular appointment or there's no guarantee that they have to go to Democrats. They could go to Green Party. They can go to independents. There's no guarantee at all. It's the maximum of that state statute is that no one party
Given this ballot, given this ballot, that's an
I'm talking about the Yeah. I'm talking about any appointment or elected seat. There's no guarantee. And I just want to make sure that that's clarified and that, that this is a process whenever we consider appointed positions to any party that we have an opportunity to meet the
Actually, you're, you're raising this in a different context then. As a courtesy, we've replaced, generally replaced a Republican with a Republican and a Democrat with a Democrat.
It doesn't have to be that way.
Doesn't have to be that way. On the other hand, the, it's prerogative of this board to follow the courtesy we've
Or have the best candidates. And then, and making sure that, again, no one party
I would welcome your help in terms of
I look forward to it.
identifying replacements for the current incumbents in many cases to find the best candidates. So
As a courtesy to Selectman Corbett, who I think the world of.
Thank you.
I would like to give her the opportunity to get to know Paul, who I think is a terrific candidate and I will be voting for you. But I think I'd like you to get to know him over the next two weeks and I don't, we don't have to bull rush this. I think, I think, I think we can you know, table this and, and Paul, you can come back and
How do you want to get to know me?
We can do it over Zoom, Paul.
And by the way, there's no more noble profession than being an attorney. But I appreciate, I appreciate you stepping up to do this.
Okay, good.
Okay. So we'll, we'll table this better. Okay. Contracts under $10,000? Questions?
You know, there's one contract that hasn't appeared under $10,000 and that was the one with, I'm not going to get the name right, but it's the traffic engineering firm that's doing some work for us, under $10,000, but it hasn't appeared on this list yet.
I don't, is Tiger still on? I don't think we, I don't think he's brought that forward yet.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get that on the next, or I'll send it to you. I can send it to you and Nick.
I think there's also a priority. We have a priority on the South Avenue analysis.
Yeah, but this work is already underway and you signed off on it already.
This is the 106?
Yeah. It's already underway. It just hasn't shown up on the, the list yet.
The South Avenue project has priority.
Yeah, he's done some work on it. Look, taking a look at it already.
Oh, okay.
I'll get it on, I'll get it on your tablets for you. I'm sorry. That, that was my fault.
No worries. Thank you.
You know more than I do.
You signed it.
Oh. Okay. Tax over payments. There's a bunch of vehicles, water vehicles and a couple. Any questions about the tax over payments?
I would say I got my tax over payment. It's not on the list yet, but I got my $18 tax over payment. So thank you. I actually do read these. It's not there. It's a great process.
I move to approve the tax over payments. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. That brings Selectman's comments. I would just reiterate what I said Thursday night on the out call. We still have about a dozen cases a week. They're all mild, breakthrough cases for the most part. And importantly, now that the vaccination is being approved for the five to 11 year olds, we're going to have a youth vaccination clinic at the high school on November 11th. I think there are already 862 people signed up for it. So 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the superintendent will be primarily communicating regarding that. Tomorrow we have an election day. And we're going to have an all boards meeting on November 15th, as I indicated, on the PD billing options. That's all I have.
Just want to wish you two well on the election tomorrow. And really actually
Likewise.
Thank you. And just to all the candidates, really appreciate everybody who is willing to stand up and, and represent our community. So I wish everybody well. And I look forward to seeing you tomorrow night.
It, it's been a heavily contested race, but that's, you just mentioned it. We've got people willing to step up and get into the fray and I appreciate all of them doing so. And I hope regardless of the outcome, they'll still be engaged going forward in some way. We've got, you know, these terrific young people looking to serve the town as volunteers and that's incredible. And I, you know, I'm delighted to see that. So good luck to everyone.
You're here.
I move adjourn at 9:14.
Second to motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.